Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item considers a minute order that if approved would authorize a community outreach program and distribution of an open letter to the community regarding diversity. You will recall back on March 27th, the City Council held a workshop on police enforcement of immigration laws. After a significant amount of public comment, the City Council did give input to staff to draft a letter to the community that reflected their comments and also to develop a plan for a targeted community outreach that would inform the public of the city police department's role and practice in enforcing federal laws. Included in your packet are both of those items, an open letter to the community as well as a plan for outreach along with a fact sheet. After receiving any City Council comments and input on these items tonight, staff is recommending that by minute order, the City Council authorize staff to conduct the community outreach as described and distribute the open letter to the community regarding diversity. And I know that we have at least one speaker on this item, but I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Do any of the council members have any comments or questions before we move on to the audience card?
None.
Okay. First speaker, Mr. Mims. Willie Mims, please.
Again, to the council, I had some issues with the letter itself. And it's basically concerned about the statement about community regarding diversity. I don't think that that was the issue that was brought before you. The issue was brought before you was either having a safe haven city or a sanctuary city. My concern is the council met, I mean, the council made a decision and directed staff to come back with this letter. The council should not have done that. They should have directed staff to come back with a report so that the whole community could see the report. But the council's mind had already been made up based upon what your statements were after we finished speaking. My concern also is in this letter itself, you talk about four corners. Well, when during this council, I mean, during this community forum, there were only two sides that came up here. Two corners of the city that came up here, not four corners. Would somebody give me a definition of four corners? When you only had two sides that come up here, one side opposing the sanctuary city, safe haven, and one side supporting the sanctuary city, safe haven. But I'm hearing about the four sides, you representing the four sides. Well, when you made the decision to disregard the two sides that were supporting it, you were, you let the people down. You're supposed to listen to all sides, not all of a sudden make up your mind as soon as we finish. I mean, your mind was, it seemed to me that your minds were already made up. Because when you started discussing your rationale, you gave long, drawn-out arguments, as though you had all met at one time or talked about it, what you were going to do. And so that was problematic for me. That's why I mentioned that it sounded as though it was some kind of a serial meeting may have taken place for you to make this kind of decision at a community forum. You didn't even wait, which was a serious injustice to the other side, to the other side that does not represent, that was not represented of the four corners. And as I said before, when you talk about four corners, you're talking about the four sides of the total community. But when you close your ears to one side that you don't want to hear from, then you have done that community a serious injustice. And so that's why I come here today, to bring redress of grievances that I have against this council, for a decision that you made on a letter, which...
Thank you, Mr. Mims.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Duri Foster.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I do believe you did hear what the community stated. And I believe this letter was an effort to appease those who did not get their wish granted. I'm a little confused, though, as why we need such a letter. If the city is already diverse, if we already are working on community outreach, why must the city write a letter to its citizens? We're already a diverse community. We already are doing things to reach out to not just simply the Hispanic community, but the community as a whole. I do not understand why we need a letter to say so. If we are willing to, to me, this letter is just basically a compromise. It's an appeasement. And to me, a compromise and appeasement, just one step away from capitulation. As the old saying goes, if it's not broke, don't fix it. There's nothing to fix here. So just leave it as it is. I asked the council to reject the letter and not submit a letter to the community. We have bigger fish to fry. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Wolfgang Crossky.
The school teacher in me first sees there's a lot of grammatical errors in this letter, and hopefully those will be fixed before this gets sent out. But with that, the real estate side of me says that this is nibbling. In negotiations, one of the best tactics a buyer will use is nibbling. Just let me skip a little bit, little bit, little bit. And this letter allows nibbling from those that did not get what they wanted. Bill Cosby wrote the book, you know, Everything You Need to Know You Learned in Kindergarten. One of the books in kindergarten is if you give a mouse a cookie, then he'll ask for jam. And although this is not labeling or giving labels to sanctuary city or safe haven status or anything of that, it still opens up that door in the negotiation process for nibbling. Pittsburgh is diverse. We already know that. Those that have lived here their whole lives pride themselves on the diversity that we have here in Pittsburgh and that you can get food from any culture that you want here in Pittsburgh. I served a mission for my church and went outside of California and was amazed how undiverse other parts of this country were. I just assumed everybody was like, you know, Pittsburgh. And that education I got here in Pittsburgh from our diversity has served me well. We don't need to do and give into nibbling. The police department already goes above and beyond with their community outreach. The officers that I've associated with, the chief of police, Tony Baldazzo, all of them do above and beyond when it comes to community outreach and making sure that people know that they are safe here in Pittsburgh, that we don't profile, that we look at local crimes and protecting our citizens. If people can't see that, I don't know what else could be done for them. We don't need to open up the door for nibbling and for further negotiations. The city of Pittsburgh is a great city. We all know that. If you don't know that, why do you still live here, would be my question. So I don't see a need for giving a mouse a cookie so that they can ask for jam. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I would wish to speak on this item? Okay. Is there still a floor? Come on up, please.
So apparently, sanctuary cities is a divisive issue, as we all know. And sometimes it brings out the best of us and sometimes it brings out anger. I don't, and I think that the state is looking at the entire issue, and California will work that out, and I don't want to argue that tonight. But I read the letter, and I see it as good policing. It's so important that all members of the community, whether they're documented, undocumented, if they have family members who they worry about, feel comfortable to go up to any police officer and report a crime or report what they've seen and know that they or their family members aren't putting themselves into jeopardy. So I support this letter. I think it's good, solid police work. Everybody in our community needs to know that they can have access to the police department without being concerned about other issues. And I applaud you for it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I'm going to state your name and city of residence, please.
Yes, my name is Tony Humannis. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh. I've been involved with a lot of companies that have taken a 20-year journey on diversity. And usually what they start off with, input from their community or their group. But they come with a definition of what it means to them. And so in a lot of organizations and companies, diversity means we, when we go to the budget, we talk about, do we have diversity of staff to fulfill our needs? So diversity has a bunch of different dimensions. And I sense we've put it in kind of in a corner that's dealing with the current tough issues. But I just want to let you know that diversity has a number of other dimensions. But also, the letter, I think, is a good start. However, how do we put teeth into it? For example, in Chevron, what we did is every executive got on their appraisal, there was a diversity dimension. So you would get rated on whether you valued diversity or not. So all I'm saying is, this may be a first step, but you need to get a little bit more clarity and put some concrete, and that may become in your plan, some concrete items of what you're really trying to achieve. One part is the police trying to help, because I just interviewed a bunch of students for the Kennedy King Scholarship, and all the students told me they're frightened as hell. And so I do think there is that dimension that popped out about kids being afraid that their family or they are going to be taken from their home. So that's a big dimension. All I'm saying is, try to clarify, what does diversity mean for us, for the city council? When you get to the budget, what does diversity mean when we're going through a budget? So we got diversity of talent that reaches out. Right now, the council has diversity there. Looks good. So again, my last thought is, just look at diversity a little bit broader and more specific, and try to have a little teeth into it so it does something. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. Any council member would like to comment at this time?
Through the mayor.
Okay.
I feel that this letter has a lack of factual information, and it beats around the bush. I think one of the main concerns that the community had was essentially fear of our police and the practices related to immigration. And I think that there was a lot of misinformation out there. And the attempt and purpose behind the letter, I believe, was to inform our citizens of the current police practices. We are not changing the police practices. They are what they are. The police chief sat right where Mr. Fritz is during that forum and stated exactly what those practices were. The fact sheet that goes along with this letter goes far beyond what the letter actually states. Once again, I think it's beating around the bush. I'd like to see the letter state what the fact sheet says, which is that Pittsburgh police do not check immigration status when they check your identification. That includes traffic stops. I'd like to include that Pittsburgh police do not participate in ICE raids, which is exactly what the police chief said and conveyed to us. That is fact. The fact sheet before the redacted fact sheet and the one that was revised towards the end of last week and sent to the public does not include the item relating to that police do not participate in ICE raids. Why? If we are doing it, why can we not communicate that to our public to reduce fear amongst our public, which is the intent of what this letter was supposed to do? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To one of the speakers, to Mr. Mims, dating back to November, repeatedly, in November, December, January, February, and up to our meeting in March, we had public speakers on non-agendized items asking us to consider Pittsburgh becoming a sanctuary city. So all of us have had a lot of time to think about it, notwithstanding the fact that it's something that has been a point of debate in other cities, at the state level, and nationally. Second, we are not required to agendize something just because you have public speakers that come out and ask for it. Every year, the council has a goals and priorities workshop. That goals and priorities sets forth what the city is going to undertake for the next year. Those goals and priorities are then followed up by a budget which helps fund those goals and priorities. Debating whether or not to become a sanctuary city was not a goal that we were required to have a properly agendized item to spend staff time to debate. We chose to have a workshop to hear more feedback from the community at a special meeting compared to there being a barrage of public speakers at normally scheduled meetings where we are trying to conduct the business of the public with important... Whether it be budget cuts, whether it be CalPERS, whether it be pensions, we have the normal business of the people to attend to. I did not go to that workshop with any preconceived notion other than something I heard council member Killings state, which was, when I took an oath and got elected, it was to uphold the Constitution of the United States. So I'll be damned if I'm going to adopt something that contradicts the Constitution of the United States, especially when it's being debated at the state level. It's just not my place. I was not elected to take up and pass laws locally that are in conflict with either state or federal law. I, in an open-minded fashion, heard from all the community members that were here, and I am proud that at least the direction was unanimous not to go that route. I appreciate the letter that's been put forth, and I appreciate the comments from my colleague to my right. I'm not prepared to make it any stronger to dictate policing in that letter for a lot of reasons. But what happens if ICE does have a situation here in Pittsburgh, and our police are called to keep the neighborhood safe? I'm not going to have our men and women that are sworn to defend all of us stopping to think, geez, is this in conflict with our letter? No. Our men and women that are sworn to uphold the law need to keep our men and women safe. They need to uphold the law that's on the books locally, in the state, and federally. And I think it does not fulfill the obligation that I rose my hand and swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States to adopt anything that says or dictates policing policies or that we are not going to enforce something if we are asked to. We are in a city that is in a state that is in the United States of America. The community comments we had, though, were heart-wrenching. I do not like the propaganda. I do not like the fact that people feel afraid to go from their homes. So I think that the letter, while two of our speakers said it's not necessary, we have to do something. We can't have kids that are in school that are afraid. We can't have parents that are afraid. There's a huge miscommunication. Obviously, we're not going the route of a sanctuary city. But our citizens do need to feel comfortable that if they are pulled over, we don't have the ability to check immigration status. If there is a crime in a neighborhood, they should feel comfortable to come to our police department or to our officers. So I think the outreach is important. But this isn't about any one race. And to Mr. Mims, the four corners comment, I think I was the first one to use four corners probably three or four years ago. It just refers to keeping in mind that there are four corners to the city of Pittsburgh, whether it's the river, whether it's the Southwest Hills, whether it's Highlands Ranch, and that we need to be aware of all four corners of our city and those that inhabit it, and that we are doing everything that is in the best interests of everyone. So it's not that there's just two sides of this issue. I think if you ask a lot of people, there are more than just two sides of it. But collectively, we know that we want to communicate to our citizens that they need to feel safe. It's not our job to enforce federal law, but I'll be damned if we're going to do something that circumvents it if we are required to. That's all I have to say at the moment.
Any other council member wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just coming out, definitely want to thank all my colleagues for their comments and the public for their attention to this item. The comments that I made that night definitely was based on the consideration of the city as a whole and the policy direction that we're going as a city. And so with that, you know, I made my comments known because I felt what was in the best interest of the city was not to go in that direction. And so I can guarantee the public that there was no preconceived notion or meetings between council members because everything was open in the public, and I think that we gave that opportunity. In matters of the agendized item that we have here before us today, I was on the record and I was open about really being reluctant about even having the letter itself. And I was the one who really didn't want any immigration language in the letter. While I understand the fears, I don't believe that this letter will alleviate fears and relatively have the impact based on the decision that we made not to be a safe haven or a sanctuary city. And so I see the letter. I see there was some, there's a paragraph in there that I wasn't too, it didn't really align with what I thought the letter was going to be. We looked at the template that we received from the city of Oakley, and it was really just about diversity, inclusiveness. And I reluctantly would have been in support of that, that I made that statement that night. What I see here tonight, although I do understand the community outreach effort and wholeheartedly support that, the letter, I don't believe, really adds value overall to what we're trying to say. And also, I really wasn't in agreement with the immigration language in the letter. So with that, you know, I know that we all will make our decision on this letter to move forward. But I wouldn't be in support of the letter as it stands, just because, as I stated that night, I didn't believe that we needed to further push the idea of our stance on immigration. So I'll leave my comments there.
Councilmember Longmire? Okay.
Through the mayor. Sorry.
I had a comment.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. I'll wind it up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to reiterate the point that if we were to say that the police department participates, does not participate in ICE raids, we would not be dictating policy to our police officers. The chief is the one that stated that that is not their practice. That is not their practice. And I think that this letter needs to be informative of the police practices to alleviate the fear. And I do think that this letter will alleviate fear. Why? Because information will go a long way. And the information in which the city functions, specifically the police department relative to immigration and this issue, needs to be put out there. And if people are afraid to be classified as a sanctuary city, you know, we said we're not going to have a policy, okay? But to be blunt, our city already operates as a sanctuary city. There is no clear definition. You know, we do, in terms of our police department, behave in a manner in which other sanctuary cities behave. So what I will say is, I think the, I think the letter needs to be a little bit stronger. I don't think I will have full support on that. But I will support the letter if I don't have support to make it stronger and the fact sheet. Thank you.
And to the mayor, I would just like to say that there's a reason that staff had options up on the board. I don't want staff to be persecuted for making a decision for us. Again, I just want to reiterate, we didn't hear about this once. We heard about this over the course of over three months. And we've had a chance to see what other cities have done. And I just want to compliment staff for at least bringing to us examples of what cities did. And those examples included no policy. Those examples included a policy. And those examples included an open letter to the community trying to demonstrate outreach. During that workshop, the city manager qualified what was in front of us by the organized group that wanted sanctuary cities. Everyone needs to understand, what we were being asked to adopt, the state of California in their emergency ordinance didn't even adopt. So what the organized group that came, that asked upon us to adopt, as far as a policy went, isn't even what made it through the state senate. The city manager was criticized for referring to that as maybe being too extreme, I think was the term. That's not even what our senators adopted. So I don't, on that topic, but to Councilmember Benales, I don't think our city operates now as a sanctuary city. If our PD got called today, what I think is very important is that we don't have any policies that say we shall not respond or cooperate with federal authorities. If we were a sanctuary city, that would be the case. And I cannot support any policy that dictates on the books that, or any, or alludes to any language that tells our men and women that they cannot cooperate or respond to federal authorities if that is the case. Again, we are in the city of Pittsburgh, which relies in the, which lies in the state of California, which is a state in the United States of America. If the FBI comes in, if any federal agency comes in, I expect our police department to cooperate. We are not immigration officials. But that does not mean we do not cooperate if a federal agency asks for anything. It's just not the way it works in my mind. So, thank you.
Councilmember Longmire?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, we've heard from my colleagues, so I think I'm going to chime up here. I'm not sure if we need an open letter to the city to speak on this. I am very sensitive to all of the comments that we've heard right here in this chamber, right in my own community, while I'm at the store, while I'm at a medical appointment. This sanctuary city has been, as my colleague said, on the news and in a newspaper for a very long time now. I can tell you, I've had a long time to think about it and to consider it. And I came to the council meeting, and I was, to some degree, overwhelmed of the stories that people had that were fear-based. And I've said it before, people should not live in fear, no matter what the reason is. I don't want to make, if my colleagues decide that we're going to do some type of communication, and it be in the form of an open letter, I would not want to see that communication or open letter be about policing. It needs to be about the attitudes that I believe this council and past councils have shared and actually displayed. I think we need to talk more about the outreach that we have done, the outreach that we planned on doing. I appreciate the chief coming forward and telling the council and the community, enforcing immigration laws is not his first priorities. There's not enough training or budget money to do that, nor if officers wanted to check status. It's just not an option. So I would like to see us focus more on if there's going to be a communication. Let it come from staff. Let it be posted on our website. We can send some out, but also it being talked about in maybe some of our NIT programs that we're doing all over the city. And that I want to be very careful that we're not boxing the police department. And somehow, it's taken as a policy of what the police does do or does not do. There may be situations to where there may be some law enforcement intervention as a the chief had said, but this is not something that is a mandate or an priority for the city. So...
Done? Are you done?
I guess I am now.
Okay, I want to address some things that were said about, one being Mr. Mims, how did I come to my decision? Okay, I'd like to share that. It was really tough for me, and I heard from both sides. I got emails from both sides. I even joined one of the groups to hear from one side, to see, to get these different perspectives and everything else. But what really changed my mind about sanctuary city was when I pinned the city manager, and Brian Addington, as to what would happen? Can we legally say that we cannot do this? Can we legally say that we can provide this protection? No, we couldn't. And so for me, that set up a false sense of security, and I didn't want any parts of that. That was a big part of my decision, that I did not want the sanctuary city. As for the omission of the police department in the fact sheet, again, that was because I went again to the city manager, and we had this long conversation, we're going back and forth, and the bottom line was he still could not say to me that, no, this couldn't happen. And because of that, I will not be a part of anything that will make someone believe something, and we turn around and our police department has to do their job, not want to do their job, but have to because they are obligated to. That is not fair for us to put that on them, nor is it for us to have citizens believe that they're protected when we can't. That's not fair, and it's not fair for anyone to ask us to do that. That's how I based my decision. So no, it wasn't the five of us talking. We were probably at odds on everything that was going on. We never had this conversation. Why? Because everybody was caught up into people yelling and screaming at them from both sides. I know that's what happened with me. And again, I can stand on record and say, I have a daughter, I have a son, their grandmother was an undocumented immigrant, okay? So yeah, it's personal for me as well, too. But again, that should not be why I base a decision, something that's so important. So again, you guys have to understand, for me, it's personal. A letter going to the community, this letter is saying we're inclusive. I also went back to the city manager because I was upset because I'm saying this is supposed to be a letter that's inclusive? It had absolutely no mention of anyone from African descent in this letter. And I said, I would not support a letter that did not include us. We're a part of this community as well, but we're not the topic at this time. So the letter was not inclusive. So I had problems with that as well. So I'm saying all this to say that we're trying to do the best that we can for this community. And as Sal says, the four corners of the community, it means that we're trying to work with everyone in our city limits. Not who's opposed this month and who's for this month on an item. It's five of us, 73,000 of you. We have to do what we feel is best based on the decisions, based on the information that we gather, based on our personal feelings as well, too. That has to come in at some point because I've got to live with myself at the end of the day. So again, I'm going to ask, is there any other comments? If we want to put this to a motion or if we even want to even consider? So that's where I am right now.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Hearing the comments from my colleagues, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the item, the letter as is with the fact sheet and the outreach plan as well.
Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, what I would ask is that staff take this back and reconsider, or if we choose at a later date, or we just let it die.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion because I think we have everything that we need before us. My motion is no letter to the community, just scratch the letter to the community, but just the police department and staff continue with their outreach efforts to the community with the outreach plan. I believe that that's the most effective way, is being personal. And I believe our police department is doing a great thing, and even with the comments that came tonight, we know that Pittsburgh is an inclusive community. We know that we're a diverse community, and I think that's reflected in our practices as a city amongst our staff, amongst the members of our community. So I would support the outreach, but I do not support the letter.
Councilmember Avila?
I would second Councilmember Killings' comments. I do support the outreach. I did not hear consensus on the letter, so obviously I cannot support the letter. I feel we're indifferent. I don't think there's three of us that are on the same page as the letter, but I wholeheartedly support the outreach, and I will second Councilmember Killings' motion that he has put on the floor.
Through the mayor, if I just could add a comment to this before we vote. I'm extremely disappointed in not having a letter, an open letter to the community explaining the current practices of our police department and explaining the inclusive nature of our community. You know, I want the outreach, the continued outreach, so I will probably vote yes, but with the note that, once again, I'm extremely disappointed that there isn't a letter to go with this.
If I could, Madam Mayor, just one point of clarification. And I'll look at Councilmember Killings because he made the motion. My question is, with regards to the fact sheet, my understanding is the police department was going to use the fact sheet as an integral component of that outreach, as something that they would have, pardon me, have at those meetings, and we have more than 20 of them planned to communicate with the public. They were, I think, readying themselves to translate that fact sheet into Spanish so that it's something that they could be handing out. If that's something that can be used, could that be made part of the motion? If that's something that you would like to see us not use, then I just want that to be clear.
For me and my motion, I didn't include the fact sheet. It was more so just the community outreach. The fact sheet, might as well, you could put that in the less, similar to the letter. It's something that's going out to the community. But the talking points, definitely, obviously, if they're used. But the fact sheet is not something that I really supported. But let me also state with that, because I know that it can be amended by the colleagues if they wish so, the reason why I don't support the fact sheet is because I really am sticking to my original statement and stance on the overall notion of the city dealing with any immigration issues. So that's the reason why I don't support the fact sheet, is because overall, I believe, my statement, even the night of the workshop, was I didn't include, I didn't want to include language going out that talked specifically about federal immigration enforcement by the city of Pittsburgh. And when I say federal immigration enforcement, I mean just dealing with federal immigration issues.
Okay. Council... I'm sorry. Councilmember Longmire?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think, I'm looking at this a little bit different. I look at the fact sheet as a tool that the department use, and I think that if we say as a group that they cannot use particular interdepartment communication tools, I'm thinking to some degree that that is really tying the police department's hands, just like the engineering department. They may have a, they may have a fact sheet, they may have maybe a list of items that they request people to, you know, submit in order to get, you know, permits and other city departments. So I do not agree with my colleague respectfully. I think that the fact sheet, if that is a tool that the police department wishes to use in English or Spanish or any other language, I would say that we keep that separate from a quote, "letter," open letter to the community.
Okay. On that, when we talked about having an open letter, there was never mention of a fact sheet that dealt with the police department. I was shocked when I saw it, to be perfectly honest with you. And so I'm not for having that. But saying that, I'd like to ask the police chief to come forward and explain to us why he feels this is important.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I do feel that we need to have some latitude at the police department. You're asking us to go out and to explain our policies and our practices to individuals, and we do that on a lot of, you know, on a lot of different things. And one of the things that has been very successful for us is to have some information bulletins that we can hand out on it as well. For instance, when we get people, talk to people about our social media, we have a nice card that we've made out that talks about our Facebook site, that talks about our Twitter site, that talks about our NICSIL program, those kind of things. I first got the idea of a fact sheet from the county sheriff. He's working on a fact sheet to put on the sheriff's department website to help individuals know, clear up some of the confusion on issues with immigration and law enforcement's involvement in immigration and with people who are in custody. So I feel that having a fact sheet will help us get the message across of how we do things and why we do things as we go about educating and help alleviating the fear in our community. I'd be happy to entertain any further questions on it.
So is there any concern for any of my colleagues in chief, you could stay up here, but that the fact sheet in any way dictates policy that you don't want to memorialize in writing and you'd be more comfortable verbalizing it? I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I just want to ask that question.
Two things for me. Number one, I think we're getting way too far into the weeds on this. That's number one. Number two, and correct me, Madam City Attorney, this is not even an agendized item. The item that was before us was the open letter.
The agenda does reference the community outreach program.
Okay, but it doesn't say fact sheet.
I think, respectfully, I think the fact sheet can be part of the discussion.
Okay, so I'm going to just go on the record. I'm going to just tell you that I believe that we're too far in the weeds on this. I think that if the police department, any other department, has a tool that they want to use to communicate with people, as long as it's not really setting hard principles about, you know, policies or budgetary items, then I think, you know, the latitude should be, should be given.
Okay, I just had one question. The fact sheet was going along with the open letter. We're not doing the open letter, is my understanding?
Fact sheet was a tool to be used as part of the outreach.
Okay. So can we deal with one issue first, which is we're doing the...
Yeah, so just a point of order, if we may. So I supported a motion for outreach, at least there's a first and a second. The outreach in the motion was silent. Does the maker of the motion want to bifurcate it? Does the maker of the motion, you and your motion for outreach have said, no fact sheet? And I'll look to the mayor, how she would like to handle it, but whether it's two separate votes where we vote on outreach and then a vote on a fact sheet or no fact sheet, we've heard from the chief that he would like a tool, heard from some council members, they feel that the fact sheet went hand in hand with the letter. The manager has said the fact sheet actually went hand in hand with the outreach. So I look to the maker of the motion, because I supported your original motion, that was really just based upon outreach, and I agree with Vice Mayor Longmire. I don't want to get too far into the weeds to micromanage it. A letter died for lack of a second, so there's obviously not the support for a letter. I would almost encourage the maker of the motion to just offer up outreach and kind of let staff do what they feel they need to do without being too specific, but I'll look to the maker of the motion.
Councilmember Killings?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and, with the motion on the table, no letter, support the outreach, and then the outreach efforts won't restrict the PD on the tools that they use in their outreach.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, we're going to call for the vote. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.